I don't know what to do. I just have to keep on. Okay. I don't know. 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 Okay, so we still have the item, the consent agenda and non-agenda items. If there's anyone here who would like to speak on consent agenda items or non-agenda items, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, the consent agenda. There's two items, minutes from the May 4th to 2010 meeting and minutes of the September 7th, 2010 meeting. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda or if anyone has comments on the minutes. Yes, sir?
Uh, question, McCool? A couple of fixes on the May.
I thought there might be.
Um, let's see, page three, Commissioner McCool, Phil's planning commission has tripped. We were striped. And then on page five, I guess second full paragraph, mention that Chairperson Craig Craft said something doesn't fall into the, I think it's a purview, it says previews. That's another type. That's all I think.
Is that it? Those are the only two items. Okay. Can we make those changes and then approve the minutes?
No, just make a motion to approve with those changes.
Motion to approve the minutes? Okay.
And then we'll make the changes before they could.
Move to approve the minutes with the changes required by Mr. McCool.
I have a motion.
The second up.
Second by Commissioner Ricker. Any discussion? All in favor? James?
We're voting on both? I wasn't here for one.
We haven't done the consent agenda yet.
Oh.
We're just doing the minutes of May 4th at the moment.
Right.
Okay, sure.
Okay. The other item was not pulled from the consent agenda, so we can either pull it and discuss it or someone can approve the consent agenda. I'm gonna make a motion about that.
So, just for clarification, for the May 4th, there would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Did you abstain or?
No, I voted in favor of a.
In favor.
It's May 4th meeting.
Thank you.
And then there would be, because Commissioner Elverston was not a commissioner at that time, so he would be nays and we have one abstain. Okay. That works.
Okay. She's technically a nay even though he's not eligible?
Well.
Yeah, I don't think he'd get nays.
He's abstaining.
Yeah.
Abstaining.
Abstention, okay.
Which would actually be a yes.
Right. But he can't even be a yes. Okay, so we still have the item, the consent agenda, right?
Yep. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Second, yes. Okay?
Sir.
Okay. So we have a motion by Presidator and actually I saw Commissioner McCool, so we'll put him in the minutes. For the second, all in favor?
I wasn't here.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Oh, okay. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six yays.
One abstention.
Two abstentions.
Three.
Which are really yays.
Apparently.
They are. Okay. All right, so that passed.
Good.
Okay. That completes item four on the agenda, the public, next item, item five, public hearing and approval of the Clear Wireless Final Flat Site Plan. Do you have my little cheat sheet, by the way? Because I'll never remember all that stuff.
No, maybe not.
Yes, I will.
Ha. I knew she did. Thanks.
You said proof of publication.
Thanks, I'm getting there. Okay. Phyllis, the proof of publication, public hearing.
I do have the proof of publication.
Thank you. Okay. Does the applicant have a presentation? You have to come forth and do you make that or do you want to start with?
Well, I was just gonna give a brief.
A staff presentation.
Yeah, brief introduction.
Excuse me, Matt?
So.
Did you open the public hearing?
This public hearing is now officially open. We have proof of publication?
Yes.
Does either staff or the applicant, would they like to start with the presentation?
I'd just make a quick, brief introduction.
Okay.
We are considering a final flat site plan for a, within the Rock Creek Ranch PUD for a Clear Wire wireless communication antenna to be located between community park or in community park between the Ball Field and Williams and the synthetic turf field. The applicant is here to make brief presentations and then open up some questions and the staff will have any follow-up for that after the presentation.
All yours. Just come up to the microphone and state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Matt Schucher. I reside at 1234 East Bryan Avenue in Salt Lake City, Utah, here representing Clear Wireless on their proposed application here for this site. I won't take too much of your time, so I can turn it back over to you guys to see what kind of questions you might have that I can address. So, we're proposing a wireless communications facility, an unmanned facility, to build a stealth tower in the city park that will include three RF panel antennas and one back hall antenna. The Clear Wire mission is to empower a smarter, more connected world with the fastest, most efficient, high-capacity 4G network. This is, the same infrastructure as a wireless cellphone company, so you build the cellphone towers and whatnot, but this is going to actually be for wireless internet that will be used, you know, on laptops, homes, combination of the both, PDA's, phones, that sort of thing. In fact, here is, you know, you have a residential modem just like you would with a Comcast or whoever the USB would be like, the air card that you can get with Verizon and whatnot. Several devices that will be used to utilize the service. I don't even know why they put this light in here. I guess it's basically just signifying the capacity that the Clear Wire has with their service. It's this new fourth-generation system that you've probably seen all over the TV with Sprint and different companies. It's broadband speed, higher, high-speed internet. We have what we call a network of networks. We have relationships with Sprint, Intel, Google and other companies. Sprint is actually a 51 per, they're the majority shareholder in the company, so we can leverage their infrastructure and enterprise sales force. And so we have the ability to basically hit the ground running with the infrastructure that we have in place with strategic partners. This is the largest 4G network in the country right now. I, as I said, come from Salt Lake City. I just helped them launch that market. They called me out here to help here, but we, Clear Wire is doing a national launch across the nation in all of the major metropolitan areas and will fill in the gaps from there. You can see all of the networks they've already launched. You know, they're continuing to work on several different markets. Oh, and if I go back, sorry. What did I do? Down here, this pops. What that refers to is the amount of population that the network covers. And so currently, we're covering over 60 million people and expecting to double that by the end of 2010. I don't know that you're interested in the Clear Wire values, but here they are. Basically, we're customer-centric with every decision, really focused on low cost to provide a low-cost solution for internet. As you know, there's so many different applications, you know, cell phones and the charges that you guys see with those nowadays, you can do Skype on your phone and different things that as long as you have a Wi-Fi connection, you actually don't even need a service plan anymore in some cases, as long as you have that network connection. So it really could reduce the costs for a lot of people utilizing this service. So our proposal, like I said, is to build a self-stealth pole in the city park and then install an equipment cabinet in a 10-by-10 lease space with the city inside an enclosed structure. This is the view to the northwest. You've got these big, by the football field, you've got these big existing towers. This is what it would look like with the new, so this is a photo sim the engineers did. And then we would paint it to match the existing poles there. We always try to blend in as much as possible. We always try to co-locate as much as possible. We always have guidelines and restrictions with cities and municipalities. This is another view. This is what it would look like and that is our proposed facility to house the equipment that's needed to run the site, so it would be tucked behind this other building. Again, we want to make it as stealth as possible and I know sometimes that's difficult, but want to blend in the best we can, so, and that's kind of it. Are there any questions?
Yeah, actually, I'll start. The last, that last rendering that you showed, on the previous rendering, it looked like the height of the pole was the same as the light towers and that one, on, from that view looked like, you know, it was just your rendering, but looked like it was shorter.
Well, it was a different view. It's a 42-foot tower and I believe you should have drawings there.
Woodsfield light poles are, are they 42? They must be taller than that.
They exceed, yeah, they exceed 42.
Okay, so they're taller.
Right.
Yeah, this is a closer view and so it doesn't go as tall as the light, but this is kind of from afar that would represent it better, so.
Just, that other one had appeared to be closer in height to the actual poles. Okay. Can, can, theoretically, could you add additional or co-locate with additional providers on this?
Theoretically, we can, but because of, you know, every, when an RF engineer designs a site, they're all about height, 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 you know. Obviously, if we put in an 80-foot pole, we could get a lot of, you know, three or four carriers up there pretty easy. Theoretically, yes, someone could co-locate here as long as that worked for their network. You know, and since we're in a 42-foot pole, we take up 10-foot top of it for our equipment, they would be, you know, below that, so.
But we wouldn't allow other antenna equipment on the, to be mounted on the exterior, is that?
No, that's correct.
I believe.
We'd want it.
No, I understand, their equipment's all internal.
Right.
Right, but there's other cell towers in town where we have external.
Correct.
Pieces of equipment.
Like at Highway 128.
Right. At some point in the future, would we allow that? Or would that interfere with your equipment if it was mounted directly outside?
No, it would, typically, I would think that you wouldn't allow it, which is probably why we're doing a stealth application.
Yeah.
But it depends on the equipment, like some equipment doesn't jive with ours, some does. Sometimes you have to have a certain amount of separation, that sort of thing.
All right, I'm just, you know, I know we're going to, the efforts right now of making this stealth, so to speak.
I mean, if anything.
But, meaning that you're not seeing the actual equipment, but, but would we, is the condition of approval that we would not allow that? Anything to be mounted on the exterior of that pole?
I don't think you can.
No, it's not a condition.
I'm saying today you can with technology, but maybe sometimes on the road.
Okay, we can regulate that.
What?
Whether or not they can have antenna.
It would have to come back through the process if somebody wanted to do that, yeah.
Okay.
Through the planning commission and town board.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, yeah.
We would only be approved for this application, so.
If anything, we would, if anything, we would require another carrier to either go in the same pole below or maybe look at a larger pole, a taller pole.
Replace it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so they would swap it. Or do an extension, a lot of the poles can just be extended where you don't even have to replace them, so.
So this tower pole is 24-inch diameter from bottom to the top.
It's straight up, yeah.
Straight up. It's not tapered, it's not.
Correct.
What is the diameter of the light poles?
They're not that big, no.
A lot less.
I don't know. It could be 24.
It could be 24 at the bottom.
Yeah. The hard part for us, because our equipment's at the top, that's where we need the most space, so.
Right.
24 inches is about as, you know, this back hall antenna that I discussed, you know, those are dishes that connect the network from site to site and things like that. And a lot of them, they have round antennas and their minimum diameter is 30 inches. It seems like they've spent some time customizing this to make that pole as small as possible, so.
Sort of like dishes inside the.
Well, there's three, there's three flat panel RF antennas and one flat panel back hall antenna.
Okay.
So it's not a dish.
Not a dish. Per cone.
Correct.
Is the equipment inside the shed itself, is it high voltage equipment?
No. Our sites, this is actually pretty unique to Clear Wire. Oftentimes, like when we do a roof mount on a building-type installation, we'll get power rather than, you know, bringing out a new meter, we'll get power from the landlord because we only take up two 20-volt amps breakers.
Two 20-amp breakers.
Mm-hmm. So, and I think we typically provision in case we needed to add more equipment with those landlords, like 60 or 80 amps, but yeah, what will be in there is not high voltage, so. And I'm sure that it'll all be locked and secured and everything else, so.
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah, we, our equipment is rated to be exterior, but to, again, aesthetically look nicer, oftentimes we'll enclose it like that, you know, next to that other building and match that building, so it doesn't stick out, so.
Match that sweet shed that's down there.
And so the step-down transformer is basically from what?
Go from 480 to 120?
Well, yeah, there's, in the plans, because there's not like an existing panel we can pull from, we, there's a nearby transformer that we're doing a step-down to our facility, yeah.
Okay.
What is the range of the service that this will provide? I mean, how far out would customers be able to utilize it?
You know, basically, they design the network, just like any cell company, they'll design it so they can go as far as line of sight can see, but that one, you know, it only can carry so much load of people using it at the same time. So you have to have a certain amount of towers and, so this might cover, you know, a two-mile radius or whatever, but it shoots down like this, so when you go to the next pole, it hands off to the next tower type thing. I don't know the exact amount of coverage this particular pole would, I could find that out, but I don't know off the top of my head.
What's the access to the top of a pole look like? How do you get into the, to service the equipment?
We really don't need to service the interior. It would be super rare that we would ever need to get back in the tower. We have RRU units that basically we can control the tilt and whatnot of the antennas should we need to change them. Really, the only access typically is to the base equipment, so, and that's, you know, every once a month or every other month or just as needed if something comes up, so.
But if you did have to get in there, would have, I mean, do you have panel access at the top or do you have to take the pole down or?
No, we wouldn't have to take the pole down. There would be, it's a canister and there would be a way to take it apart and go in there. That would be too cumbersome to do it that way out.
Okay. Other questions? The applicant at this time?
Does this building's kind of blend in with the one that's out there or are you going to use the same materials?
Uh, yeah. We, we can do whatever you guys require of us, I believe.
Yeah, it's been designed to match the existing equipment storage shed.
Picture over here.
Yes. Yeah. That's why I asked.
So, proposed Clear Wireless new wall to match existing structure exactly for equipment enclosure, so yeah. That's typically a standard requirement, so.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation by staff?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things and then Fred might have a couple things. We, we've structured a lease agreement with Clear Wire for a 10-by-14 space for the equipment and the lease agreement includes monthly payments of $2,000 with a 5% escalator every year. It's a five-year term, renewable, and the revenue generated from this is to be used for park maintenance expenses. And, let's see, that will be considered by the board if the planning commission recommend or approves the final flat site plan tonight, they'll finalize the agreement that they're being on. The only thing I would mention is that in going through this application, we did require a stealth application. There were a couple of different ideas, but in terms of the way their system is set up, it ended up with a safer pole. To do this on one of the light poles was difficult because of the space that's needed inside the pole. So the other point I wanted to mention is that we did require that they not exceed the 40-foot, 20-foot height limit for this application, which is the height limit for open space things maximum in Rock Creek Ranch. So meets the requirement there for this, in this zone. And we did work with Clear Wire quite a bit before they submitted their application to see if there were other co-location sites within town that worked for them and worked for the town, but this site was determined really the only site in town that worked for Clear Wire, so.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I have one.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
There was mention that there was one piece of feedback from a resident. How were residents made aware of this application and how'd you get that feedback?
We mailed out notification letters to residents, main, yeah, within 500 feet. Mainly it was the homes that back up to community park there. And we didn't have any residents come in prior to this meeting, but prior to the one that was canceled a few months ago, we had a resident come in and look at the plans and did not
people who have various services. And a site at Community Park might make sense for, I know AT&amp;T needs it desperately. I know Sprint is just getting it, I guess, because that's who these guys are. Verizon could use it, so.
Well, yeah, we have, we have a number of sites in town. We have three out on Highway 128.
And they don't reach?
And I think we have two or three at Superior Point Office Park.
Right, but they don't get to the area of Eldorado Drive, for instance. None of them do. But the one at Community Park would.
Yeah, and we haven't had any carriers come forward.
So, from a planning perspective, though, you're putting it up anyway. It has the capability to co-locate other carriers on it. Why go through this again when they do come forward later?
Well, I think you'd want to review each of those applications as they come forward.
And you will, but you already have a site that's set up.
And I think your code limits it to 42 feet. They'd have to come in and ask for a variance. It wouldn't just be a regular application. It'd have to be a variance process as well to bypass the 42-feet limitation found in the code.
And this time, they're not requesting a variance.
And this time, they not requested that. They've said we're okay with 42 feet.
Yeah.
Because they didn't ask for one.
It's always better for an applicant to come forward without any variance request if they can. Makes the process.
Well, I think I'm with James, too. I mean, part of the responsibility of the planning commission is to think of these things and so that we don't end up with another tower next to it that's 80 feet high and, you know, be able to provide this kind of recommendations. And that's why there's, you know, some rate of sitting here to, you know, throw those ideas around. And so, if we just, I mean, I hope we can discuss it and talk about it and not just nix it because they didn't ask for it.
One of his comments was that that pole perhaps could be added on to.
Yeah, or replaced.
Or replaced, so, yeah.
And the other thing you gotta remember, they could co-locate the next provider would have, and this existing pole would have to be below them a certain distance. That means then that has ramifications, but it might be okay for the second provider.
Well, they're.
But, but if you.
What I heard was they need the top 10 feet of the pole, which means that you've got, you're now at a 32-foot height, which is shorter than many of the houses in the neighborhood. So, you know, it becomes not very useful very quickly.
The engineering of that, you know, is engineering.
Anyway, all I'm saying is that it makes sense that we've got light poles that are at least 10 feet taller right next to the pole that's going in. Why not make it so that they can put a freaking pole up that's at least as tall as the light poles? It just seems like common sense. And it's just, once again, seems like really bad planning to not even consider it. But, that's just me.
They work on sightlines, don't they? Basically?
It's line of sight. RF is always line of sight.
RF is always line of sight. So, somebody actually did some engineering and came up with these sightlines. They 42 to be.
Well, they know how bad, how far they cover with this particular.
And honestly, from a staff planning perspective, I would never think that bringing something forward that exceeds the height limit would even be considered.
Well, it might not.
If we can, if we can bring it forward and.
If there weren't already 56 or 60-foot light poles there, I don't think we would even be talking about.
Also serving a utility function, right?
Sure.
You know, one delivers light, the other delivers internet. Same, same. Anyway, not to hold up this discussion for that, but.
Well, that's the best question on that.
Yeah.
I mean, my, my opinion is, yes, it can be changed. Another carrier wants to come and incur some expense to take that pole down and put a pole in that matches height and go for the variance and all that. It's certainly possible for somebody to do. They'd have an existing site that we could say, hey, we got this existing site. Here's what it would take. You'd have to put in your own pole. You'd have to put in taller pole or whatever the case may be.
Except that, except that you're, we're adding costs.
I know. So, the only question I have, really, for this purpose is, is it anything that Clearwire's advantage to be taller? And so, I'm guessing they must have looked at it and said, 42 is serving our purpose. We don't need to go for a variance yet anymore. In which case, I don't know why we, I don't know why we mess with it at this juncture.
Unless they were told that if you ask for taller than 42, you're not going to get it.
So, that's my question.
No, what they're told is.
Going to Clearwater and saying.
What we tell them is what the require, what our requirements are, and if they go, if they need to go above that, then they're going to need a variance and it adds additional risk to the application.
Right. And it adds, it adds additional cost to go taller and you may have to go deeper with a larger foundation for a taller antenna, right? So. So, you might be able to say somewhere down the road, we could put a taller pole on there, but you might not, they might not have engineered the foundation for a taller pole.
No.
Had more wind load on it, whatever. Anyway, just throwing that out.
It's all two-foot diameter, all the way up.
I understand.
They may do put you down, but they, they just have to engineer it that way.
Okay. Well, we are, we're at the point where the applicant has made, they've made, well, they've made the application with this, this height and this location at this time for this equipment. And I think that's where we're at, so.
Is the applicant permitted to come back and request? I mean, if we approve this and they want to come back and say, you know, yeah, we'll take a shot and go for the height of the pole, would they, I mean, preventing them from doing that?
No.
So, they've heard our discussion. They know what's going on. If they want to make that choice, that's up to them. They can come back and say, you know, they've got it approved. They've already got an approved plan. If they want to come back and request a.
Sure.
A change, they can. Their existing plan would be, still be approved and they can bring that forth and so.
And we looked at, in our initial discussion with them, we looked at replacing one of the light poles.
Right.
But there's, you know, that's a little, that has additional expense to it as well, so.
So, I think, I mean, I think there's been enough discussion that, you know, if there is a desire to do that, the opportunity is there to do it. And I agree with you, James. It's, you know, it'd be nice to get these things, you know, in front of enough people before it was done, but, you know, that doesn't always happen and our process doesn't allow it. But we do have a way for them to accomplish it if they want to.
Any other discussion? I will invite anyone in the audience in the, from the public who wishes to comment on this, to come forth. Seeing none, we allow the applicant to say any final words or if you wish to. If you want to, just come to the microphone, so.
I think that's good.
It's good, okay. Okay. If there's no further comment, we'll close the public hearing. All right. Any other discussion? Anyone?
They've made a nice approach to get this stealth canister thing incorporated in the overall.
Thought we were going to get the pine tree.
You want the pine tree?
Have you seen the pine tree once?
No.
Oh, yeah. They have one at the top of Keystone, one of the roads up there. You have to look twice, but you can definitely tell it looks like a part of a Christmas tree when you really look at it.
Superior Christmas tree. Anything else? Okay. Do anyone make a motion on this? I have them. This is a resolution?
Yes. You know, I'll make a motion to approve.
Resolution of the Planning Commission, Resolution of BC4 Series 2010. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior approving a final site plan for Clearwire wireless.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner McCool. Just a second, from Commissioner Folsom. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two. All opposed? Commissioner McGess? Okay. All right. Motion, resolution passes. Okay. Thank you. That concludes item five of the public hearing for the Clear Wireless File Site Plan. Item six is review of the 2010 work plan.
Yeah, I included for the Planning Commission there the 2010 work plan that was ultimately blessed by the Town Board, which includes the Chapter 16 land use code rewrite, which the Planning Commission wrapped up this year and is now into the Town Board. We have the review and comment on proposed green building standards for commercial buildings. We received the final version of the recommendations from the Boulder County Consortium and included businesses and cities within the county on recommendations for the commercial green building codes. So, we're going through those and drafting the codes to incorporate into our, into our code. And once we have a finalized draft, we'll bring those forward to the Planning Commission. Still, it's still this year, but it's taken longer to get them from the county than expected, so. Those will be coming forward.
Did any other, I mean, it's just, maybe you don't even know the answer to this, but did any other municipalities in the vicinity adopt those yet?
No. No, they're all, as far as I know, they're all work, still working to draft their own version of them. We're trying to keep it as uniform as possible. Not, the goal was to get something that all the cities and the county could agree on so that the final version that the cities adopted didn't change a whole bunch. So, we're hoping that that still remains the case, but nobody that I know of has adopted yet, so.
Are they formatting it like LEEDs?
Huh?
Are they formatting like LEED certification?
They're. It's not LEED certification. I mean, it doesn't reach that level.
Okay.
Because we didn't want to impact the businesses too greatly to where the cost was so, so much that they, big damage. So, it doesn't, doesn't reach that.
Okay.
It's, it's a lot like the residential where it's, it's, you know, approximately 30% above the current code is what it comes out to.
Harvard. Okay.
The capital improvement projects is referred to by the Town Board. And then the ConocoPhillips site, I read an article recently where Lewisville's kind of waiting to get the final plans from ConocoPhillips. They pushed back the timeline for construction now to, I think it's 2013 at the earliest, so.
Are you aware of some dispute between Lewisville, Lafayette and Brimfield?
I've heard that, yeah.
That's holding up some preliminary approvals.
As far as a road construction?
I don't, I don't know what it was. I just, I just heard it, kind of heard it through the grapevine, so.
So, and I don't know if that's what's kind of holding the plans coming forward, but Lewisville's still hoping to receive those this fall still, but I haven't heard. It's kind of been put on hold as far as I can tell.
We haven't been able to make any real headway with.
No, and.
Reviewing the impact of that.
Yeah. They had some input early on, earlier this year. The open space committees from the various communities met, but since then, there's, it's just kind of like stopped. Everything has stopped. So, we continue to make attempts, but I'm hoping as, if they, once they submit to the city of Lewisville, that maybe we can get something in front of the Planning Commission, just as a presentation and feedback from us, so.
So, we're right on track with that on item four. Okay.
Some things are out of our control, but. Huh?
So, there's lots of year left.
Yeah.
Only three quarters of the way through.
And then the future plans, plans for the Town Center project. The board recently had a work session on this, just to update the newer board members who weren't on the board at the time the division was, was drafted. And what came out of that was not to, while they're going to revisit it at a future meeting and have the consultant to help us with the original vision come back out, just to go through it again with the entire board, the new board. But ultimately, the board decided that they don't plan on making any change to that vision that they, that was developed in 2007. And the reason for that was any developer that comes forward knows what's out there, but they're going to propose what they think's best for the property anyway, so. That's an update on that, but.
So, that's great. So, it looks like just about three quarters of the year is gone and we still have about three quarters of this year's work plan to do, so that's perfect.
Well, we've reviewed, well, we've reviewed, we've completed, you know, we've completed item one, which is a biggie, and we've, we've completed all of the capital improvement projects that have been referred to us.
That's right.
And, and Chapter 16.
That's what I said, item one, Chapter 16. But the board's not done with their approvals yet of Chapter 16.
No, they have a, a second work session on October 4th.
They're going through it line by line, are they?
They're going through page by page.
It's awesome. It's awesome.
See, they got this sweet black plan version that it was really easy for them to do.
So, October 4th is, I think they'll wrap their initial review on October 4th.
Okay. Okay. So, at what point do we revisit the 2011 work plan?
Well.
That's probably not going to be necessary.
Should that be item six of the 2010 work plan? Is it 2011 work plan?
We could, I mean, dedicated meeting to.
Why don't you let us get back to you on that?
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
Later this, I mean, at the end of this year or the beginning of next year?
Did you read the draft minutes from May 4th? Well, here, this paragraph right here. That tells you why we don't need to go do the 2011 work plan.
I know. Because we're going to necessarily evil. Thank you.
Because they know work.
All right. Is that it for item six, review of the 2010 work plan? Any other questions, comments or anything about that? Anyone's got? Okay. Item seven, staff announcements?
Yeah, a couple of things I mentioned already with regard to the Town Center and Chapter 16. The town is looking at, I know the planning commission's been interested in this. The Town Board is looking at forming an Economic Development Council. So, if there's anyone, they haven't adopted the resolution forming the council yet, but once they do, I want to let you know, if you're interested, there'll be publication, accepting applications if you're interested. And it's being headed by Trustee Hanson, so if you have questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Okay. Excellent.
We'll get done here in the next couple of meetings, I'm sure, so. The board is going through the 2011 budget. They have a meeting at the, next board meeting, which is on Monday, they have a work session on policy items for the budget. So, nothing huge, but if anybody's interested.
Little attorney money for Chapter 16, never mind. Just kidding.
And I'm happy to forward those policy items to you if you're interested in what they are. In case anybody wants to come down and discuss them, I can do that for you. And if anybody wants a copy of the budget, let me know. I'd be forward that to you as well.
Isn't it online as well?
Yeah, yes, it is. But if you want a hard copy, let me know. Resolute has finalized, I don't know if I mentioned this at our last meeting, they finalized an agreement with the Hilton Hotel chain for one of their. an agreement with the Hilton Hotel chain for one of their Homewood Suites, I think is the brand, for their property. So, we're working out a couple of details for them, and then I think they'll be coming forward with their final flat site plan and subdivision, minor, major subdivision. And I'm not sure yet if Hilton will come forward with their final flat site plan at the same time for the property they're buying, or it'll come soon after, but...
Where is that?
The Resolute property is the Horizons commercial piece.
Okay.
But it's owned by a company called Resolute.
So, then is there, is there any further discussion about home rule? And, I mean, obviously, we can't really take advantage of hotel taxes and fees without that?
No. Um, the board has, the current board has no interest, as far as I can tell, pursuing home rule, so... So, that limits, like you said, our lodging tax. We can't do that. But we hope that with the hotel going, it'll spur some other uses, whether office or just retail pads happening there at the site.
And if we do go home rule after they've been in place, then can those be imposed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Just trying to get it out there. I heard there was another hotel approved in Brumfield somewhere, and I don't know if anyone has heard that.
Heard that, but those were serious.
But I don't know. I kind of gathered it was maybe, maybe it's toward Arista or something. I don't, I don't know exactly where, but...
Um...
No, a new, a new one that's going to be built.
I thought it was right, is that 96th, where they're building those condominium units? Right across from the ConocoPhillips site?
Is that Brumfield there?
That's where they're building that.
Maybe that, maybe that's it.
It just opened that one.
Well, the Hilton, yeah, the Hilton Suites or whatever, right?
The Hilton, that's what it is, right? The one that's over there, it just opened.
Oh, okay.
No, this is when it just closed in the last 90 days or something?
I, I, the only other one I've heard of is on 104th or Church Ranch and US 36.
That's Westminster.
Yeah, that's Westminster.
Okay.
Any word on our other two parcels, Oshster or 176?
No, Remington Homes has 18 months to final file there, and they completed their water studies, but we haven't received an application from them. And then the, what was the other one?
76.
Oh, Storage Guardian. Yes. They have three years because they requested vested rights, but we met with them recently on some access issues there off of 76 and the adjoining property, the one acre property to the north. And they still felt like they're a year out for construction to start, so...
I was worried there was owner or somebody trying to buy up land over on the new Town Center. Is that their...
Yeah, we've met with a couple of companies. One who has options on, one has options on all of, all of the properties except, I think Anderson was the last piece they were trying to get an option on, so... So, we're just waiting to see if they close or, you know, what happens there. All the properties, I mean, they, Beale Minkick, Wheatus, three remaining parcels, the Weinstein unincorporated piece, Spicer, Shock, and then they were trying to get Anderson's. So, yeah. That's, that's a lot of land. It's a lot of land to take down.
You don't, you don't buy it unless you're thinking about doing something with it. Last time I checked.
Well, unless you think sitting on it for three years and selling it for more than you bought it for is a bad idea.
But that's still doing something with it because you've assembled it, right? So... Okay.
Any other things?
Is there an opening on Prostack?
There is an opening on Prostack.
Really?
Yes, I think somebody just recently resigned.
They did.
Yes.
That's right.
So, yep, if anybody's interested, taking on another night of meetings, there's an opening on Prostack. And I think we have one on the recycling committee also.
I think two.
Two?
I'm not sure.
There's opportunities.
Okay. Joe?
I have one quick thing. On the look ahead, it shows planning commission on 11/2. Even if we had something, we wouldn't be able to hold it that day because that is election day.
Election day. So, we're just going to push whatever, anything?
We would push whatever. Or have it that Wednesday or Monday or something, but not that Tuesday.
And then on the look ahead for the first meeting in October?
October 5th. Nothing.
Nothing, right? And then is there any, anything on...
Or October 19th.
19th, right? There's nothing, right? Okay. Any, anything that could fill that slot?
Um, I don't have anything development-wise, but if, if there's something, you know, if I can ever get ahold of the ConocoPhillips guys, you know, I'd try to get them scheduled as soon as possible, but, or if there's anything the planning commission wants to discuss or meet on, I'm happy to put stuff together as well, too, so...
Okay.
But that night I'll be, I, I won't be in town, so if we have a meeting spread, we'll cover that on the table.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I got something. So, after 14 years of unofficial involvement and 12 years of official involvement with the Town of Superior, I'm going to bow to my other obligations and step down from my spot on the planning commission, and I can do that as soon as you have somebody to take it.
So, this is your official announcement, or do you want to write us a letter or...
I, however you prefer to have it happen to us. I can write a letter.
Usually, they write a letter.
Okay.
Unless your term is up and you don't go on, then you don't, then, yeah, that probably would be the best.
Say it ain't so.
Oh, it's so. Just got, I have two teenage daughters and... Tuesday night's a busy, so... Sometimes my head hurts.
Well, good luck.
I don't think I'm leaving yet.
So, you're going, your intent is to stay until I petition someone.
Until you find somebody, but, you know, know that it's open.
Sure.
So, based on that, we'll...
Add one more.
Publish. Add one more to our list of vacancies.
Yeah.
And then another I had to discuss with John was, we, the planning commission appointed Craig as the vice chair, and we said we revisit that once we have a full planning commission. So, I don't know if you want to revisit it or if we just want to continue forward with the setup as we have it, or...
Did we say?
Craig, Craig didn't want to take it without having a full planning commission decide whether or not he should have it. I think there's...
I think that night we just had a, barely had a quorum or something.
Yeah, there was only like four, it was over five.
All right, well, I would say we can, we should, if that's the case, we should discuss that at the next, you know, the next meeting, but we, we don't often have all, you know, all nine members anyway, so...
And, and, I mean, you can leave it in place as it is, too.
Sure.
Everybody's fine with that. I mean, we don't have to discuss it again. You could throw that up for a vote.
Right now? Throw that up for a vote? Just nix this thing right now?
Yeah.
Get it done?
Put more people on it.
Yeah, we have, well, we have eight members without Rochelle here right now, so if someone would like to, to propose that now, I'll open that up.
Move that we leave Commissioner Prestesator in his currently appointed slot.
As vice chair.
Vice chair. Whatever his appointed slot is.
Okay. That's fine. I'll have a motion. Motion in a second by Commissioner McCool. Any discussion? All in favor?
You can vote for yourself.
You can vote for yourself. Okay, that passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Be careful what you ask for.
Locked by the window, I look for you.
Right, yeah. I think that's it. If there's nothing else, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yay.